Good afternoon, everyone. We will call the agenda of the committee of the whole meeting to order at four oh four P M on May the ninth, two thousand twenty-three. We'll begin with our, uh, our land acknowledgement. The town of Hinton respectfully acknowledges that it is located on the First People's traditional lands. We recognize this traditional territory to show respect and understanding to those who walk this land since time immemorial. Today, we uphold our ongoing responsibility to work together in the spirit of the intent of the treaties with all the First Peoples and nations that call this place home. The town expresses gratitude for the opportunity to build a better community on these sacred lands for generations to come. With that, we are called to order and we will move on to the adoption of the agenda. Uh, council, any amendments or additions to the agenda? Uh, administration?
Nothing for me.
Uh, then we ought to looking for a councilor's session.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the committee to set the agenda for any of the whole meeting. For Tuesday, May ninth, two thousand twenty-three, presenting.
Thank you so much. Uh, council, any discussion on that? Seeing none, then we will call to question. Please vote electronically now. I am just wait. Councilor LaBarge?
Yes, and I forgot that portion of it. I'm signing in right now.
We got it. It indicates that you voted in favor.
Yes, I did.
Perfect. Excellent. Uh, then that is carried unanimously. Council, we will move on. Uh, citizens minute with council. Jen, do we have anybody electronically with us today?
No, there's.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and I don't see anybody in chambers with us, so we will move on to delegations and presentations, of which we have none. So we are on to our reports from administration, beginning with five point one. Uh, the two thousand twenty-three budget adjustment report as at, uh, April thirtieth, pardon me, two thousand twenty-three, and we will turn it over to administration.
Thank you, Chair, and I will turn this one over to Ms. Porble.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, committee. We have, uh, presented before you the, uh, budget adjustments that we identified for this plenty time, um, as of April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Number of the adjustments were, some of the adjustments we were aware of in the fall, we were just unable to confirm the amounts at that time, so they're coming forward shooting now. Uh, adjustments include, uh, new revenue for fire services and reviewing the budget actuals prior to, uh, finalizing this, we have, uh, become already very, very close to the budgeted amount, so felt it pretty to, uh, increase that slightly. Investment income, and we also, uh, felt after audit in the good news item with the increases there that we would, uh, increase our income investment for the two thousand twenty-three year. Uh, after the budget was adopted in December, the, uh, project management office has applied for climate resilience capacity building grant, of which we were successful. That grant is for eighty thousand dollars and that allows us to do the necessary footwork, uh, to become, to be able to be determining where we're at for our readiness for some of the new innovations we've obtained. And the MSI operating funds, uh, actually doubled in two thousand twenty-three from our allocation of two thousand twenty-two. So bringing that forward as well. Also noted on the sheet is potentially, um, another new revenue item for potentially moving forward in a direction with the water treatment plant. I realize that has not come to council yet. This is just a placeholder in the event that it does. The, uh, conversations I have, the monies that we're, will be required to be spent are going to be able to be grant covered through one of our allocation grants, so it'll be a matter of putting forward the application there. Uh, new expenses both relate to the, uh, climate resiliency grant, that's the report to, uh, come up readiness, and then any reports that will be required moving forward on the water treatment plant. Um, through out with the adjustments and because of the increase to the, uh, MSI operating, it does show that we're putting a little bit of money back into the reserves from where we landed with budget in December. The total municipal revenue to be generated through taxation for two thousand twenty-three is fifteen million four hundred ninety-nine thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars and showing that we're putting two point seven million dollars into reserves budget to be. Is there any questions?
Counsel? I just, I can't see Councilor LaBarge on screen, so I don't know if he has a question at all.
I am here.
Yes.
I'm, I'm putting on some headphones. I'm having a really hard time hearing.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? If not, uh, we would be looking for, uh, potential action. Counselor O'Shannon?
Mr. Chair, I have no questions. I'd just like to move it. Committee refer the, uh, two thousand twenty-three budget adjustment report to the May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting of council.
Counsel, uh, we will wait for that to hit our school, uh, screens so that I can read it. Uh, are there, uh, any points of discussion or any questions on that motion? Very well seen and hearing none. We will call it to question that committee refer the two thousand twenty-three budget adjustment report to the May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting of council. Question or pardon me, we'll call that to question. Please vote now.
And I vote in favor that I'm signed in, but I don't have a May ninth agenda showing up on my, uh, civic web.
Okay, um, then we will note that that is voted for unanimously. Thank you very much, counsel. Is there anything else on that particular? Oh, there is Councilor LaBarge, can I?
I just voted for.
Okay, thank you. Um, anything else in that action item or pardon me, that report? Seeing none, then we will move on to item five point two, rates of taxation by law, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, administration, please.
Thank you, committee. I, uh, the report was sent out for you, uh, where we have prepared a number of calculations to help guide committees through the decision-making process for our upcoming taxation. There are a couple of the calculations where we have blended the rate to make it equal for both residential and non-residential. There's also a couple of calculations where we have maintained the one point seven to one ratio. What that ratio means is that non-residential properties and their tax, their tax rate is one point seven times higher than residential rate. That's been in effect for quite a number of years and it balances out the equity between residential and non-residential revenue that you're generating. And with that, is there any questions?
Counsel, any questions for administration?
Or barring, oh, council, the other thing that I think is important for council to, to realize is from the, um, from the time that we passed our budget to when we got our most recent assessment numbers, our assessment has, um, our assessment numbers have decreased over two thousand twenty-two. So we have presented as one of the options, the original motion that was made was three point nine, uh, percent. We, if we were to look at, um, looking at the same numbers and the same amount of money that is actually taken to reserve to offset that assessment reduction, we would be looking at approximately four point seven. So I just wanted to note that for, uh, for council to consider. So we are looking at approximately one point yeah, approximately to do one point eight, uh, percent difference, um, as per the assessment reduction.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, on C O Panasik's, uh, point, just for clarif- clarification, the recommended action of three point nine would absorb that a certain increase, so the mill rate would just simply go up three point nine, we would, uh, make up that difference. Um, I'm trying to better understand the, the taxation impact on that. Mr. Chair.
If I may, committee, we, on the recommended action, we are utilizing calculation four, which is just the three point nine percent increase from two thousand twenty-two rate to two thousand twenty-three rates. If you're wanting to absorb the change in assessment, we are looking at calculation five, which brings the two rates to par, meaning you generate the exact same revenue in two thousand twenty-three as we get two thousand twenty-two plus three point two percent.
Yeah, thank you.
Counsel, just clarification. I believe I said one point eight. Those, my apologies. It's zero point, so it's just.
Uh, Counselor O'Shannon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So just for additional clarification regarding your Michael's question, if we look at calculation four, the three point nine percent increase, the, the differences made up with a hundred and eighty thousand dollar top up from reserves, is that correct?
Do the committee guess that it's correct?
Thank you.
Counsel? Wait, pause, wait, fine. Counsel, uh, very seriously though, uh, if, if you require a break, so if there's anything you need to think about uh, or discussing, that's possible too, and just throwing out options for you, if that's what you need, you don't want to rush anyone either. Counselor O'Shannon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have all of a question in the hand, remember? Um, the administration, based on the, uh, direction to administration that was put forward a couple of weeks ago regarding applying a portion of the two thousand twenty-two surplus to reduce the annual taxation. Uh, that's captured in the calculation six, correct?
Do the committee, yes.
So if I may continue, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Um, in the event that committee chooses to direct administration for, um, let me, miss the, the direction of it. It's sort of bring us back to, uh, three. Okay, so the intent is for committee to bring a suggested, uh, calculation, adjusted tax rate for, uh, the regular, her decision. Okay, sorry. In, so in the event that, uh, committee does direct to bring forward, uh, calculation three, what happens to the rest of that surplus that isn't going to be applied to, uh, municipal taxation reduction?
If I could, uh, so one of the things that is, that we're actively working on right now is coming up with this sort of strategy. So we, we have a lot of reserves that are funded essentially based on the capital plans that have been put forward, uh, and then we have been slotting in the dollars. Some, some reserve accounts have been council-directed, some have been, uh, more admin-directed based on the capital plans that have been put forward, but we are looking at taking another look at our reserve strategy with council. Uh, and sliding it to where we believe is the most, if we can, where council believe is the most appropriate spot. So right now is sitting in unrestricted surplus, um, from administrative, uh, administration's perspective, we're perfectly comfortable leaving it unrestricted surplus for the time being until we have a good reserve strategy and at that point that's whatever, uh, those dollars or how much is left, we would slide it into the appropriate, uh, the appropriate reserve fund. Now it essentially be based on, uh, typically percentage basis, based on, uh, the infrastructure needs each, yeah, according.
Mr. Chair? Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, generally, I, I do like putting forward a motion before, but I think part of the quietness perhaps, or at least from my perspective, is, um, the, the report has two options, I, 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 I believe in the sense of three point nine percent taxation or closer to zero. And my struggle is seeing all the information, whether it's, uh, you know, the infrastructure, uh, needs that we have as a community, whether rec center, water treatment plant, the R C B, now being, uh, a lot of these changes, uh, that are different from December. For me, my appetite is something below three point nine, but obviously, uh, for myself, not, uh, you know, under one percent taxation, so, um, I guess my question to administration, uh, if there's appetite to pick something in between or something different where we put less reserves, uh, in, but we find a taxation rate below three point nine, how easily is, uh, is that done, uh, per council if there's an appetite to do so? Uh, through the chair, that's, uh, that's relative to me, see, I parted. There's a specific number in mind, maybe of the, um, as in example, maintaining our existing ratio of one to one point seven, which is a relatively tight ratio, um, but if we were to look at, I think, three percent on the non, real, pardon, sorry, on the non-residential and two point five eight on the residential side, we would be looking at offsetting. It would, we'd be short around two hundred fifty thousand, which could come out of the twenty-two uh, unrestricted surplus. So if we're looking at a compromise between three point nine and the one point two, that's one of the rates, uh, approximately that we can look at.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Race?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I mean, when we are forward, looking at a stronger power plan, to be, I'm favor of, you know, you need that money for infrastructure. So, uh, taxation of three point nine, you thought it's still stuff? Um, that overall, while we have a lot of problems, I know.
Through the chair, um, we know we have, um, an infrastructure deficit that is going to need to be funded, um, you know, and we would be looking at the short in the short term, I'll say ten years, um, what specifically what those numbers are to fund our infrastructure that we just don't know at this point. We do know that we have a lot of capital needs that are gonna have to be funded in the, the next few years with some of our, our key water distribution assets coming through, but the, uh, uh, the specific numbers we can't, we can't say.
So sure, I'm, um, I'm.
Uh, Counselor Race, I just had one other speaker in queue, if you don't mind?
No, no.
Okay, uh, Counselor LaBarge, did you had a question or do you have a suggestion?
No, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, when, when we got the, uh, I guess the budgetary update, there was no operational implications in there. And so as we're talking about this go forward, um, what my recollection of the cost of redoing the intersection at Kelly and, and Switzer was three hundred thousand, I think we spent fifty of that. There is actually, uh, a budget um, surplus because we are not gonna do that this year. Is that not correct?
Good man? Uh, through the chair, so we wouldn't consider that as a surplus because we look at the two almost separately. One is gonna be funded out of reserves and or our allocated grants. Um, but when we're setting the tax rates, essentially what we do is we determine, or council determines how much money or how much money is required to fund the programs, uh, and how much money is going to need to be put into reserves, and then the tax rate reflects that. So we do look at capital differently. We don't have the capital adjustments affect the operational budget, um, but the contributions to reserves are essentially in the long term, what funds your capital budget as well.
Thank you.
Counselor Race?
Thank you, sir. Just have one more question. So on a, a home value of two hundred seventy thousand and a six point nine, not two point what would, uh, um, what would over you?
Do the chair, uh, for the second attachment, which my apologies, I did not, uh, bring up in my original presentation, does give what the actual dollar um, change is for properties. So I'm sorry, I didn't do a property based at three hundred and fifty thousand. I do have one here at three hundred and ninety-three thousand. So in two thousand twenty-two, a home valued at three hundred ninety-three thousand paid two thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars in taxes. And with the three point nine percent increase and because their assessment went down in two thousand twenty-three, that same property will pay two thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars in property taxes at a three point nine percent increase, um, so a change of twenty-seven dollars. So twenty-seven dollars a year for a property whose assessment decreased. I'm looking at a property, um, a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar home that was also assessed at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-three. Their property taxes from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three, if it's a three point nine percent increase, would be ninety-seven dollars over the year.
So under two dollars.
Yes, maybe.
So, Counsel, the, uh, on this attachment, these are, uh, actual, a sample of real life examples, what, uh, some of them I.
Counselor Race?
Okay, I would like, um, can I say to move it, working on that committee direct administration to bring the rates of taxation by law, two thousand twenty-three forward to the regular council meeting on May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three with a three point nine increase using the calculation four um, to the residential and non-residential taxing, with the understanding that revenue shortfall of a hundred and eighty thousand will be covered by the two thousand twenty-two unrestricted surplus. And just quickly, I wanna speak to this. You know, we've, we've gotta take care of our needs for the next five, ten, twenty years. We also have to be thinking ahead. And I, right now, I'm thinking about a lot of people plant, the rec center, our underground infrastructure, kind of stuff. And it would be nice to say to our people, there's zero, um, tax increase, but we just kind of continue with it, so. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Race. I have myself in queue next. So administration, just to speak to calculation four, I just want to be really clear about what the implications are. Um, if that is supported at regular council, what we're looking at is a three point nine percent increase, uh, to the two thousand twenty-two, uh, tax rate. And ultimately though, what we will still have to do is dip into reserves for a hundred and eight thousand dollars in order to ensure that we have proper operating funds moving forward in the next year.
To the chair, that is correct.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Uh, council, any other questions or discussion on Counselor O'Shannon?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I'm pulling in support of the proposed motion. I think one of the challenges that we have when we have a budget presented to us is putting the percentage increase on the, uh, on the taxation for the upcoming year. In two thousand twenty-two, when we were deliberating what the two thousand twenty-three tax rate we're going to make, what then represented a three point nine percent tax increase because of changes to assessed values and because assessed values in total have gone down, that three point nine is actually now, as Ms. Porble said, equivalent to a four point seven. So I think by counter, by committee and, and maybe council, sticking with that three point nine percent, it's still adhering to the principle the council was trying to achieve in having those discussions. But it also is providing some tax relief to citizens of Hinton rather than imposing a four point seven percent tax increase. It's still only going to be a three point nine, uh, with a hundred and eight thousand, roughly, a hundred and eight thousand dollars, uh, being taken from reserves to offset that additional cost. And just to clarify to administration, in a roundabout way, that hundred and eight thousand is then coming from the new two thousand twenty-two municipal surplus, correct? Because the surplus goes into reserves and we're drawing money out of reserves to cover the, uh, the, uh, shortfall for with three point one percent payments.
That's correct, and then, uh, um, and typically you can either, there are one or two ways. You can have a, um, tax rate stabilization reserve, or you can have an unrestricted. So those are the two places that are typically, they're drawn from. In our case, we have an unrestricted reserve, so it's, we figured it was the most appropriate place to draw them.
So I may continue, please. So in short, I think that, uh, calculation for the three point nine percent tax increase, it represents a good balance between some of the, uh, tax relief to the citizens funded through the, uh, two thousand twenty-two surplus and being, uh, responsible council and ensuring that, you know, exactly three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars is going to be put into reserves for future expenditures to help cover off some of that infrastructure deficit that we've talked about a little bit today and that we've created before. Uh, I think it's the best compromise and I, that's what I'm supporting again.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Counselor LaBarge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I won't speak in favor of this, and I think along the same lines as Mayor Michael's, um, I'd, I'd like to see us sort of come somewhere. Uh, and this is a follow-up to the, to the last discussion we had, uh, somewhere between, uh, the zero that we arrived at and the three point nine where we're at here. I know we're talking about taking money out of reserves. We've never really fully done the work of, of, of figuring out what that number ultimately should be, go forward anyhow. Uh, and so we're using a, um, a, a measure that's not been measured. And, uh, so I would, I would like to see us arrive somewhere in between, uh, where we got to the last time we talked and what we're talking about now, so I won't, uh, be in favor. Thank you.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor? Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I also won't be supporting this. I, I do like, well, it's unfortunate that the assessed values went down, that the three point nine is, 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 is better than a four point seven. I, I, I see the, the win there that we're absorbing some of it. Uh, but I'd like to go a little bit further. For me, uh, I like the, the, uh, mill rate increase to be closer to two point nine percent. This is drastically different than the intent of, uh, a motion that was passed a few weeks ago, uh, with the, uh, surpluses. I know we have new information, so this is our venue to land at that number, uh, but taking all of that into account, I, I think the number, uh, I wanna give a bit more tax relief to, to the residents. I think two point nine. I'd go as far as two point five percent, uh, mill increase, uh, three point nine. Uh, it is so drastic to what we were comfortable with, or at least some of us were comfortable with. Um, so I won't support this, uh, and, uh, looking forward to another motion if it is defeated, but if not, uh, that's a rule of counsel. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I will, uh, I'll speak for myself next. Uh, I can tell you, I won't support. I realize it's not motion on that table, but illustrates my thinking. I certainly wouldn't support the zero percent tax increase overall. I would just, we would be dipping far, far too much into our reserves. I think ultimately, this is about finding that compromise where most of us can get on board. Uh, I would like to see us work a little bit harder tax relief, so I find myself aligning with, uh, both Counselor LaBarge uh, and the mayor on this one, but it won't take much movement for me. Thank you. Counselor Race?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know what I would like to propose is move this forward and then we would have a, a week, a week to speak to our citizens and see what, what they think about this. And then make a decision one way or the other.
Counsel, any further discussion on this before we call the question? Seeing none, then we will call the question that committee direct administration to bring the rates of taxation by law twenty twenty-three. Forward to a regular council meeting on May sixteen, twenty twenty-three with a three point nine percent increase calculation for. To the residential and non-residential tax rate with the understanding that the revenue shortfall of a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Will be covered by the twenty twenty-two unrestricted surplus. Counsel, please vote now. And Counselor Labarche, if you could verbally indicate your support.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will not be voting in favor.
So that indicates three, four, and three against the motion is defeated. Counsel, the floors, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I will attempt to put a direction on the floor. I guess Miss Davy Campbell, the same recommended action, but. With two point nine percent increase. And I guess I'll ask CAO Panastic, the intent is just to change the mill rate to two point nine percent for the. Non-residential and residential. So whatever that amount is, then. Next week, whether it come before us, we will see what the exact impact and maybe we can speak to it. But my intent is just. To take table four, reduce the the income or the revenue from res and non-res down one percent. From both categories. And with the with the verbiage of me using the same template as a recommended action, putting two point nine percent increase. Work for that intent. With our frankly words, Smith. Yeah, so through the chair, I would say that community drugs administration bring that. Rates of taxation by law forward to regular council meeting on the sixteen with a. Two point nine percent increase. And then I would. Simply stop it there because I don't have the actual specific numbers and that would relate to, but I don't think this is. We have a well idea of what that would be just based on the others. I think that would be sufficient. So if I may, if I can use that wording, if I can speak to it.
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Perfect. Thank you.
Just actually a few areas for clarification. So. Two point nine percent is for both residential and non-residential. Okay. And so we're looking at the. Same percentage increase to both categories. Correct. Okay, so the split rate still remains seven point two on table four. The the tax levy numbers would decrease one percent from three point nine to two point nine on the categories. And if I may speak to it. Based on all the new information, a lot of different variables, I think it's palatable to go to our residents and ask for. A mill rate increase of two point nine. It is unfortunate, like I said, that the assessed values went down. So there's some impact there. In this, still positions ourselves to increase the amount of taxation levy. You know, to prepare ourselves for these expenditures that we have. And I feel that it's a it's a decent compromise. I know it's never. Perfect when it comes down to numbers that are. Are many individuals at the table, but I hope two point nine is somewhere that's close enough. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Statson and Counselor Race.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Having voted in favor of this motion didn't pass, that's okay. I'm fully prepared to get behind this one. I think it's a reasonable compromise as well. It's we're still. Providing some municipal taxation reduction for citizens and businesses and engine. But we're also making sure that there is some, I'm still being contributed to reserves. One thing, though, that I do want to bring forward for council and citizens, anybody that might be watching. And this is my concern always about funding. Taxation reductions by by contributions from reserves is it's it's a one-time. It's a one-time reduction. So when it comes time to doing the twenty twenty-four budget. If all things remain exactly the same, assessments don't change. And the municipality doesn't need any additional money. That means we're looking at a one point eight four four percent increase in taxation. Just to replace what we're taking our reserves to reduce taxes this year. So it's just something to keep in mind as we move forward.
Counselor Race.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I don't know how many homes we have in town are four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but a three point nine, you had said something. Increase would be about ninety-seven dollars per month. One to a two point nine.
Sorry, it was ninety-seven dollars.
So ninety-seven dollars per year. For a house, as long as I think he said four hundred and fifty. So a two point nine, a house now at a four hundred and fifty, probably. Seven dollars per year.
After the chair dog, and yes, we'd be very close to that.
And can you just. I nearly have people.
They fund the services that we like to provide.
And that's all, also our water, our tree, living. Good, only want to see how good the town of people.
Thank you, Counselor Race. Counselor Haas.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I I didn't speak to the last one. I wasn't favored three point nine, but. I'll speak to this one. I'm totally behind this one of y'all. I think it's a reasonable compromise. You know, we're still. Bringing in, you know, not taking so much from from reserves, but I do. The concern for next year, that's all. So, but I will, I'll be in favor of this.
Counsel. Counselor Race.
I'm just gonna say, you know, I, this is gonna move ahead whether I support it or not. And I probably most of part, but we really, really gotta remember what this tax dollars for our community and what we want. In the future for our community. So coming in with a low tax rate. Year after year, you really have to take it with what we want.
Counsel, any other questions or comments on the direction? Seeing none, if we can just see the direction digitally, then please. And then we will call a question. Counselor Labarche, did you?
And I'm in favor, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. First of all, just make sure that it reflects the mayor's desired direction. That committee direct administration to bring the rates taxation by law twenty twenty-three. Forward to regular council meeting on May sixteen, twenty twenty-three with a two point nine percent increase. I just want to double check with admin that this is clear, that we're good with the direction on the table. Yes, perfect. Mr. Mayor, does that catch it? Perfect. Counsel, then seeing no other questions, we will call this the question. Please vote now. And Counselor Labar.
And I'm in favor, Mr. Chair.
Indicated that he would vote in favor that is carried six to one with Counselor Race against. Oh, sorry, five to one, because we had that initially in there. Thank you very much. So just for clarification, that is carried five to one with Counselor Race against. Counsel, any other questions or comments or decided directions for that particular item? Seeing none, then we will move on to the council workshop five point three, and I will turn it over to. Administration.
Thank you, Chair. So. At the twenty twenty-two strategic planning process, one of the key pillars was organizational effectiveness. Goals that stem out of that pillar that helps we wanted for the organization. One of the tactics that we've identified was that council holds an annual celebration. And when they team building retreat with the administration in alignment with the review and update strategic plan, we have. As you can see, we've sort of taken that, the intent of the tactic, we've amended it a little bit to. To what I feel better suits our needs and requirement, just to be able to strategize. Into a workshop setting, educational setting. So we are recommending, we do believe that. Should be approximately two base. But we we did want to give this for council. Council's benefit. We did want to bring forward a list of topics that we believe. Were being beneficial to a, I don't know, strategic discussion about. We are comfortable with the. All of the topics being included in this one was contributed by administration and council, but we're. There, there's a few that we can't promise we can do just because we have to rely on. So some external. Some external agreement being the facility tours and the institutions, but we're confident that. We can, we can certainly do the rest. We left out the dates and we left out the location at this time, just because we can. That will be a discussion for a future date, but we did want to run this forward early because some of these discussions. We will be asking administration to create the. Create the, or to do the research and to do the work necessary to make sure that we have a discussion. This workshop. So with that being said. Council has, or sorry, community has the. The purview to take a look at the list and there's anything that we missed, or there's anything that has been included that we don't feel would be valuable.
Counsel, any discussion or feedback for administration or? I'm sorry, I have Mayor Michaels and then Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I like the recommended list quite a bit. The only one. In, I want to discuss with councils, this the venue to do it is with two and a half years left on our term and certain committees being. Move, do we spend ninety minutes of that retreat and talk about potential committees? So we pass administration. The to look at what other municipalities are doing and kind of cross-reference it and have that. High level debates or conversation on, are there certain committees we want to create, planning development, rec trails, et cetera? And kind of really look, we've been losing committees and not really having that holistic talk about. Where should we be focusing subcommittee, subgroups, working towards certain goals? That would be the only one. That I saw that might not be on the list. Again, there could be a different venue for that. Maybe it's that community of the whole, we. We have a conversation or do we use that venue other than that? Yeah, quite, I think that covers pretty much everything that I'd want to discuss. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. I have Counselor Haas in queue. Counselor Haas, do you want to speak to that particular item, or do you want to go back and then make?
Uh, no, not to that, just.
Okay. We'll let you go and then I'll see if anybody else wants to speak to the question, the mayor's room. Counselor Haas.
Yeah, I I when I saw this list, I thought it was really bang on to what. Are some of the major things that are coming down to discuss, and it's a great venue to do that. I I don't disagree with Mayor Michaels though, in regards to, you know, whether it's in this workshop or this retreat, or it is. The, you know, on the agenda of the community, the whole meeting could discuss that. I'm thinking that some of these two might include some of that, maybe not necessarily committees, but. Working groups specifically, so, but I'm I'm very happy to see what is on this list. You know, especially we haven't talked about some of these things in very detail, recreation center. You know, for instance, we hadn't talked about that since for a while now, so it's a good place to do it. So I appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Counselor Labarche.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I keep turning off the video because I'm holding my laptop up to my ear and you don't want to see me that close up. So. My apologies. In in comment to the mayor's comments, I would like to see that discussion. Sort of come off that table and maybe it isn't a committee of the whole meeting. I'd like to commend the list that's been put together. When we first came together as a group, one of the one of the top jobs I think that we all identified as as. Needing to be done was to kind of build that. Bridge and that relationship between council and administration. And I'd like to keep the topics of discussion on that. On those two days, the things that involve both of those groups. And I I think that committee of the whole meeting would be a would be a totally appropriate. Place to do that. I don't disagree with the need to do it, but I I would really like to see us. Focus on things over these two days where there's sort of two two side input. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Counselor Labarche. Counselor Race.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Your demonstration, you were down, water conservation policy for our community.
Through the chair. Yes, I think the water leader strategy is really. In relation to water conservation and why that's important to bless her. So that'll all be part of the presentation, we'll discuss water leader strategies, but. I think that's more of a rationale for.
Thank you, Counselor Race. Counselor Haas.
Yeah, based on all the, I guess, comments, not everybody made one, but I'd like to move the committee. Provide consensus for the topics that are listed there for asset management. Water meter strategy, town lands development, land acquisition development discussion. Recreation center discussion, minister meeting, visiting tours. With possibility of, as CEO Panastic said, if they can rearrange with their own business.
Counsel, any questions or discussion on the direction of the floor? Seeing none, then we will call the question that committee provide consensus for the topics listed. Asset management reserves, financial strategy, water meter strategy, boot and lines development. Land acquisition development discussion, rec center discussion, ministerial meetings and facility tour. Counsel, all those in favor, please vote electronically now or against. And Counselor Labarche, if you could indicate please.
I am in support, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is carried unanimously six to nothing. And is there any other? Questions or comments or directives stemming from that? Seeing none, we will move on to reporting council reports. Boards and committees of council, and I will start with Counselor Labarche.
Uh, nothing to report, Mr. Chair. I've been lallygagging.
Thank you very much, Counselor Labarche, and Counselor Race.
Thank you, sir. Only thing I have to report is. Friday evening, I was able to help on what they need with their own evacuation operations. It was just a blessing to see other things, foundation, their organization. Working, as they were, it was just very, very well organized mission. And then Saturday. Did a little bit of work then with the rock center and got my evac to the Chris and I just follow up.
Thank you very much. Counselor Haas.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a Ash meeting last night. Everything's going as. As good as expected, usually from that group, lots of things being planned. And they also too opened up their doors to some of their faculties at game one live stream. There are a few in the seats for that. And they also provided the opportunity games and other things too. I do want to speak to though, I gotta say, I I did witness a lot of the staff and. The hospitality that you guys as a as a town created for the for the evacuees was outstanding. I know behind the scenes, you guys are upstairs and they're working, but you know, the the ones that were at the rock center. The relationships that they built with those individuals and the and the, you know, the friendships and stuff there. It was amazing.
Uh the relationships that they built with those individuals and the and the and the, you know, the friendships and stuff, and it was amazing, uh all the. All the people that I talked to down there, uh when I spent time down there were just uh, you know, very, very pleased with what that. Uh offered, uh whether it was food or, you know, drink and everything like that. So I just wanted to say to the, to you guys worked. A lot of long hours, uh and, you know, uh and but you did an outstanding job, so I just wanted to say that for the rest of the community, thank you, so. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Ross. I'm Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, uh Mr. Chair. Uh just to add, um you never want to see these events happen, but uh going through it. Uh we know how great our community is, and it's nice to see that the rest of Alberta, uh especially in our region, uh saw. Uh how big the hearts are of our, uh you know, residents or communities or businesses, I and our staff, uh these long days, I'm sure. Uh you know, they're still catching up on sleep, so uh that's the silver lining that uh people got to see what we we know here in the institute. Uh thanks, that would, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Statik.
I think, Mr. Chair, the only thing I have to report is uh. In relation to the comments of the mayor and your counselors, with all the uh work that they're in the staff, the administration have been doing. To uh accommodate the evacuees and the work that's continuing ongoing to get the facilities back to normal. Uh administrative support for the Speaker Board Law Oversight Committee hasn't been able to get finalized the agenda. And organize presenters that were scheduled for this Thursday evening. So this week's Speaker Board Law Oversight Committee has been pushed back a week, so that administration can get that prep of them. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do you have a follow, Counselor Race?
I do, and I'm sure I forgot. Our um take a relief with pilot project will commence tomorrow at five thirty. So it is our first intake day, so people can bring all their stuff that they have at work with. And Saturday is our day. Like, you know, the new. Noon till four P M. Noon till four P M is the day that people can go back and pick up all the stuff that they gave away last year.
Thank you, Counselor Race. Uh and for myself, I, wearing my principal hat, I just want to commend uh the town. Um from Karen on down to Jesse and all the hardworking folks uh at the rec center. Um from the point where we got the phone call asking us to bring in mess, uh it was so well organized. You can imagine how easy that situation could become chaotic. Uh but it was safe, it was organized, from the communications to Jesse guiding us to the rec center. Uh to offload vehicles, it was, it was perfect, it was just the way it should be. So uh yeah, I'm buying my hats off because I think that was a a lot of, a lot of. Stuff organized on very short notice, and it was done really well, so we should be proud. Um and that's all I have. Uh we will move on to C O reporting status report. Uh C O.
Thank you, Chair. So I have our April twenty twenty three operating pilots uh here, and if there are any questions on that, please let me know. Um you know, the, like everybody else, the last weekend was probably really, it's very fresh in our minds, and it was all consuming over the last. Few days, but uh I, you know, I echo everything, it was wonderful to see the team come together and get this done. We had uh. Very little, uh well, we did not have any notice, uh these are very fluid situations, and the. Fire made a change for the worst, and they had to make a last minute call, so we were uh scrambling on Friday to. Uh to make this work, knowing that the people from S and were already on the boat and heading towards our center, and we needed evacuation. Or we needed a place, safe place for all of the evacuees to go to. Um we had. I think we were two shy of three thousand uh people who came in and registered. Uh into our evacuation center, but I know it was, it was great to see that there was a community who stepped up, that really uh was wonderful to see. We're trying to. Trying to track all of the great things that all of our community partners have done, so we can recognize them. But it's very hard because a lot of people stepped up in big ways, so we're, we're very thankful for that. We're, we're trying to recognize who we can, but uh you know, there's some things that we didn't even know about that the kitchen was doing behind the scenes to. For them. Um I know I got a call from Ed Sim uh last night, they are all settled into their homes, things went well. Um they were very, very thankful for Kinton and him and the nights in hospitality. Over the next few days, we um. We're, we're really, we're, we're, we're focused on cleanup um for that recreation center. We do have some services that have infected. They're communicated, but S C S S will be primarily consumed with uh cleaning everything up and getting our rec center back of an operational regular program. Um but we can do, both that, Thursday, we will be fully operational as normal. Now, I I mentioned it before, but this is still an ongoing risk, uh that's not gonna go away for a little while. Uh come the weekend, things may flare up again there uh with the weather, so we're. We're gonna be vigilant and we're gonna be prepared for this attack uh occur again. So we're gonna be, we're gonna be prepared. Uh and we're certainly not out of the woods on Saturday. It was uh. Uh we were preparing for a possible power outage through uh. Through fire thirty one, so the good infrastructure, so the Ed Sim that would, that does at county Kinton. That hasn't happened yet. They were uh, it was very close, we, but the uh the good work from over in Loud Fire and all of the. The several agencies that attacked, uh. With on that fire, they were able to keep it off to get us to this weather window where things have been. Barely dormant for a little, but again, the risk is still very real, it's still there. Um we're gonna encourage all members of the public to be prepared for the uh possible eventuality of a power outage if it does come. Um but we are uh going to uh situate all for the best and be as prepared as we can over the next few days. Other than that, I don't think I have any, anything else to report unless there's any questions.
Counsel, uh any questions for the C O? Seeing none, then we will move on to our post session. Uh so I, Mr. Mayor. Uh very well, counsel, uh we have a direction or pardon me, a motion to move into post session. Any discussion on that?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh before we go into post session, we do have some uh a delegate who would be uh attending with us. He's not quite here yet, so we'd like to take a quick ride or go up to post session.
Perfect, counsel, then we will uh, we'll schedule a, we'll try a seven minute break, and then we'll taper from there if our delegate has arrived at that point. Counsel, any discussion on that before we vote? Seeing none, if you could vote electronically, please, and Counselor Lavarge in favor or against?
Love that motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh that is well put, and that is carried unanimously unanimously. We are on to a break. Thank you very much, everybody.